Welcome to Queen's County School Board for September the 7th, 2022. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, in the invisible of liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Sir, moved. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Had a chance to look at the closed session meetings for August 17th.
I make a motion, sir, to approve the closed session minutes for August 17th, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We've had a chance to look at the open sessions for August 17th.
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2022's open session?
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. First, I could start off, I'd like to introduce our two new student board members. Makai Johnson from Ken Island High School, welcome. And Mr. Austin Tool from Queenians County High School. Thank you. And thank you. Welcome aboard, guys. Hey, we have awards and presentations.
Yes, our first award is Project Lead the Way Outstanding Teacher Award. And I'd like to invite up Mr. Tolly to take the mic. And he's going to kind of take the lead, but we're going to come down there and join him.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Tolly. I am the CTE supervisor and associate supervisor here at Queenians County. And tonight, it is my distinct pleasure to be here to recognize and congratulate our very own Mr. Rocco Barletta for his achievement of being selected as the 2022-2023 Project Lead the Way National Teacher of the Year. And while everybody's coming up, just a couple of very good facts and tidbits here about Mr. Barletta. Mr. Barletta is a Project Lead the Way master teacher. He is a Project Lead the Way facilitator, team leader at Stevensville Little School, Project Lead the Way gateway teacher for Queenians County Public Schools, robotics club coach, power school trainer, lead teacher, sit and faculty advisory member, youth baseball coach, and high school baseball and golf coach. So not only is Mr. Barletta very involved in our school system, very involved in our county, we are just very fortunate to have him. And just quickly, a couple of facts about Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way started in 1997 with participation in only 12 schools in New York. Today, they have grown to over 12,000 schools, and they have trained over 83,000 teachers. So for Mr. Barletta to be recognized as the sole national Gateway Teacher of the Year is an exceptional award and achievement to say the least. So, Mr. Barletta, we are very fortunate to have you, very fortunate to be with you and work with you. And on behalf of the district, we just thank you for everything you've done. I appreciate it. And as he's on the way out, Mr. Barletta is leaving early because he is teaching a course for Project Lead the Way for students all across the U.S. tonight, so he has to leave early to teach his class. So dedication, that is fine. So, thank you.
Okay, moving on with some of our other recognitions this evening, I'd like to start off with the Energizer Bunny Award. This award is given to a staff member or volunteer who keeps on going. It is sponsored by Bayview Financials, who are here this evening, Mr. Chip Brittingham and Mr. Wayne Humphries. If they could please come forward. Also, I'd like to say that this award is being presented to Mr. Demby. If he would please come forward. And typically for this, we have one person who would recommend or nominate, which Mr. Pender did start the ball rolling, but really, this is on behalf of everyone at the central office. And I could continue to read, there's pages and pages, and I'm actually going to give Mr. Demby all of the comments that were made, but I won't read them all this evening because we would be here for a very, very long time. But, so I just want to read a little bit about Mr. Demby. So the September Energizer Buzzie Bunny Award is being presented to Mr. Demby, our custodian here at central office. Mr. Demby is the definition of an Energizer Bunny. He literally does it all, and he is the ultimate team player. Instead of the traditional nomination, we, as I said, have gathered today some words from our central office staff that we would happily share with you. So, from Bridget Passon, "Mr. Demby's arrival into my office always brightens my day. He always has a joke or words of encouragement, and he always seems to know which one I need at that most moment. I am so grateful for Mr. Demby for his hard work, for his kindness, and for his humor." And from Sarah Haas in HR, "In addition to being an extremely hard worker who always goes above and beyond, Mr. Demby is a ray of sunshine and always has a positive and upbeat attitude. You can't be in a bad mood when you are in his presence, and he is more than deserving of this award." And I'll do one more. "Mr. Demby is very hardworking, and I love seeing his smiling face every day. His smile is contagious, and when it's, and when he isn't working, it's just not the same. He goes above and beyond and has even taken me to get my car at Western Auto," so he probably knows who this is, "so that I didn't have to walk. But the one thing that's most interesting about Mr. Demby is he rides a really cool motorcycle, Gene Colwell." So, there's many, many more, and I do have a copy here for you, but thank you so much. I, again, with all those other comments, every time you come in my office, always a bright smile, always welcoming, encouraging, and we just love having you here. You're just amazing, and thank you for all of your dedication. I'm going to present this to you as well. And if you want to come over here, that would be great. I'll turn this around for you. And the next award is the shining... The next award is the Shining Star Award. This award recognizes someone in our school system who shines. The September Shining Star Award goes to Mrs. Katie Curcy? Corsi. If she'll please come forward, and I know that her principal's here as well, she can come forward, and all of her support systems, please come forward. She was recommended by Ms. Amy Smith, who is our supervisor of K-12 mathematics and gifted in talent instruction. Ms. Corsi is a member of the team that is always willing to help teachers, especially the math team. She is creative and develops resources to support instructional engagement for students in the curriculum, as well as provide support and directions for teachers in implementing the new curriculum resources. She is a valued member of the mathematics team. Ms. Corsi develops engaging resources for the professional development across all elementary schools and supports the other specialists with resources that provide differentiation for teachers during training. Ms. Corsi is a valued member of the team and is one of the most encouraging and supportive members for all other specialists. She is full of energy and positivity every single day. We are grateful for Ms. Corsi's dedication to Centreville Elementary School and to Queenians County Mathematics Department. Ms. Corsi truly is a shining star.
Moving on, board involvement. Ms. Harper, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith. Welcome back to school. So grateful to have a good, well, opening. Hoping everyone has a successful and safe school year. I won't say happy, that's a little ambitious, but at least successful and safe. So, thank you very much.
I want to welcome everybody back. On the 18th, we got to welcome our new teachers. Very interesting morning, that morning, a lot of new teachers, a lot of diverse backgrounds, and a good percentage came through Queenians County Public Schools, so I think that speaks well for our system. And then the following week, on the 23rd, we had all our teachers at a thing that was very informative, and I really saw a lot of smiling faces. I mean, we're really back for the first time in full swing, face-to-face seeing people. I know our board members probably are back in school, and they like it, and it's just, it's different, but it's fun. And I think we'll be off to a good start this year.
Yeah, it sounds like the kickoff went well and then returned back to school. I know all my Boy Scouts are very happy to be back in class, and so a good job to everybody to put, putting that together, and welcome back.
Well, I'll add my welcome to that. I also went to the new teacher orientation, as Dick mentioned. I mean, 24% of our new teachers are Queenians County grads, so we've got some quality teaching coming in right now, which is awesome. Not that we didn't have some, but now we've got our returning people. We also went to the kickoff event. It was really, oh, it was such good energy. The new teacher orientation was great energy, but so was the kickoff event, and Sheriff Hoffman was there, which sent really, really good information about school safety that just reassured everybody, as we all know, he was able to get five new SROs. So, you know, going into this new year really optimistic and just good relationships with the sheriff's department, which is awesome. I did attend the meet and greet at Ken Island High School, and mostly I met and graced Mr. Kenna, because he, we spent a lot of time talking, but it was nice. He poured these upcoming ninth graders, looked quite deer in the headlights a little bit, but I'm sure that he made the transition good. First days of school, I went to a few of them, and I have to say, I, if it's okay to say this, my favorite was Mattapeak Middle School. I loved all their little Happy New Year hats and just, you know, the teachers out there with their little flyers saying what their, what their name was for these sixth graders who weren't really sure where to go, and if you needed a schedule, it was out there. So it was fantastic. I mean, really fun things to do. And I also want to put a shout out to Ken Island High School. They are selling their fundraisers for their sports programs, only $20, is that right, Makai? Do you know, is it $20? Some good discounts for your local businesses, so welcome, and I'm excited for this year.
Student board members, Mr. Tompkins?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Makai Johnson. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a senior at Ken Island High School. As everyone else said, the 2022-2023 school year kicked off to a great start, starting with the freshman orientation at Ken Island High School. It was a great success. In fact, I actually believe personally that it was a great benefit to the freshmen at the orientation. They were persuaded to get involved in clubs and sports, and actually encouraged to establish new clubs if there weren't one, if there weren't any that they were interested in. In other news, outdoor sports have temporarily been put on a hold due to the track replacement. However, we're excited for our new track, and hopefully by the end of the month, we will have a new track, and our first home game will be at home. This year, we will actually be honoring staff members that have been teaching at Ken Island High School since the doors first opened, which was about 25 years ago. They will be known as the Original Six. I'm not yet sure how we honor them, honoring them, but we'll go about it in some, some way. The teachers are Nancy Abbott, Linda Keppley, Marcy Mamas, Debbie Parsons, Rebecca Ritz, and Brian Sufanowski. That's practically all I have.
Can I add one thing to Makai? You talked about the new groups. I don't know, Mr. Kenna, if we still need this, but I do know, I'm putting a plug out there, that there was a lot of equestrian students at Ken Island High School, is that correct? And they're looking for an equestrian advisor. So if anybody's watching or anybody knows anybody, they would love to have an advisor and get that club back up and running again, so.
Hello, everybody. My name's Austin Tool. I'm the student representative from Queenians County High School. So in our past news, orientation and our kickoff to our year was a great success. We're all excited to get back. The seniors actually had a senior breakfast the first day of school. It was a great turnout. This past week, class president elections are currently underway. Congrats to Trey Brown for winning the senior class president. For sports, football, boys soccer, and field hockey stand undefeated. Football beating North Carolina, field hockey beating St. Michael's, and boys soccer beating Y-Hi. It's always exciting to say undefeated right off the get-go. They've played one game, so. So this next week is our homecoming week, so the spirit week, we have Maryland Monday, Galaxy Tuesday, Class Color Wednesday, Tropical Thursday, and School Spirit Friday. Powder Puff will be Wednesday, September 14th, at 5:30 p.m. The Pep Rally Friday, September 16th, at 1 p.m. The Dance will be that Friday at 6 p.m., and the Parade at 10 a.m., with kickoff at 12 p.m. on that Saturday. So one last thing, interim reports will be sent home electronically on Friday, September 30th, halfway through the first marking period, so it's really close, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Dr. Salins?
Yes, I just have two things. One, I just want to give a huge shout out to all staff members, because really, we did have an amazing kickoff for the new year, nice and tiered in over three days, and it's not possible without amazing staff members. So I just say kudos and thank you to everyone that worked so diligently from getting buildings ready to transportation, food service, to our teachers, our support system as well. And then the second thing I want to give a shout out, on this weekend, the September 10th, we do the kickoff for Queenians County Goes Purple, and thank you to Julie and all of her efforts with that, too. Not only notice our artwork here, I don't know how many of you can see that, from students' artwork, to building awareness for Queenians County Goes Purple for opioid crisis that we've been in for many, many years, but also the purple efforts here in our, in our boardroom right now. So I encourage everyone to join. Dr. Sprinkle will be there on behalf of the system to speak, and there'll be lots of activities. We have some students, they'll be performing, we have booths and things to gather more information, and so I just encourage you to come out and support Queenians County Goes Purple.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, executive team members. It is my pleasure to present the August Spotlight. Boy, oh, boy, we got started on a great, great start this school year, and I'll just tell you, it's just exciting to be able to talk about some of the excitement today. Many have already commented on opening, but now I get to go into it a little bit more to show some of those smiling faces and some of the activities also that we actually completed in Queenians County Public Schools last month. So here we go. First day of kindergarten and pre-K. Look at these little smiling faces. Everybody was happy to get started in pre-K and kindergarten. You can see, we have one of our smiling faces, little girl just walking up there, excited about skipping to school and skipping into the building. You can see that our students are at their centers, they're learning with their Play-Doh, they're at their centers with Play-Doh, they also have block center time, they're working with their fine motor skills, developing language, and learning how to collaborative, to work together collaboratively. So we were excited about that. So there we go with our pre-K and first grade, pre-K and kindergarten students, excuse me. We have a nice welcome back here, and returning staff filled with excitement, and welcome students back. Mattapeak Middle School celebrated the new school year with Happy New Year headgear. I think Ms. Bennett mentioned that earlier today, including the principal of the school, Dr. McCoy, had her headgear on as well. So that was exciting to walk into Mattapeak Middle School and see the headgear welcoming in the new year. So that was exciting. Next, we have Dr. Shrekengoff welcoming her students at Stevensville Middle School with a smile, as you can see, and standing in the background and looking on is Ms. Bennett, board member, as well as some of our executive team members. And I'll just tell you, it was just really, really nice. The Churchill mascot greeted students as they arrived with a friendly smile. Here we have Dr. Salins welcoming students at Centreville Elementary School with a smile. She was also caught cheering at Graysonville Elementary School during the back-to-school assembly. So, we thank Mrs. Tubman, as well as Ms. Rhodes, for actually facilitating the back-to-school assembly at Graysonville Elementary School. Here again, Ms. Bennett shared in the student and staff excitement, joining the executive team on several school visits. So thank you so much, Ms. Bennett. Our amazing partnership with the Maryland State Police and the Queenians County Office of the Sheriff, I'll tell you, they have been busy, especially the sheriff's office has been extremely busy with directing bus traffic in the morning. I've gotten caught up in that little catch in, right before Queenians County High School. They've also been visible at our schools, and so we appreciate our partnerships with the Maryland State Police as well as the sheriff's office. Thank you so much, partners. Our bus drivers welcome their students, and I say their students back because they have smiling faces, and it's just always great to see our bus drivers starting our students off on the right foot. So thank you, bus drivers, for all that you do. Board members, we'd like to thank you so much for supporting our fifth through eighth grade students, receiving the Chromebooks for all of our students in grades five through eight. So they walk back to new, walk back into new devices, and thank you so much for supporting that effort. So thank you so much. Also, a big shout out to Comtech for getting all of those Chromebooks ready. We want to thank Comtech for working so hard as well. New teacher orientation was phenomenal. I will tell you, we had a wonderful time welcoming in our teachers, our new teachers, lots and lots of smiling faces as well. We took a wonderful bus tour. We had a southern county tour and a northern county tour, and Dr. Salins and I had the opportunity to ride on separate buses, had a chance to engage with a lot of our new teachers, and they were excited about the bus tour. I mean, it was a big hit. So I, I want to thank whoever came up with that idea of the bus tour, because it was definitely a winner. It's something we want to keep in mind for next school year. Hopefully, we won't have a large turnover, but when we have new teachers, we do want to give them the bus tour. You can see a picture there, we took a picture there, and Mr. Tolly actually used the drone to take the picture, so this picture there. And also, a special thank you to our board members, President Smith, also Ms. Bennett, also Ms. Bennet, and our commissioner and Sheriff Hoffman for attending our staff kickoff. Thank you so much. We had a wonderful kickoff, and I'll tell you, Sheriff Hoffman delivered a very powerful speech in helping us to keep our schools safe, and it was just tremendous, all of the information that he provided us on kickoff day. So thank you so much, Sheriff Hoffman. Professional development, we had a wide variety of professional development that was offered to our returning teachers that included some of our community business partners, such as Truist Bank and WCEI Radio Station in Easton. Some of our outstanding dynamic presenters were Peter Pichucci, Executive Director of the Carroll Casino Fund, who provided outstanding movement professional development for our performing arts teacher, and I'll tell you, he came pro bono, free, pro bono. So, but our teachers received quality professional development. Another presenter, Graham Heffernan, co-founder of the CEI Quaver, music flew in from London, again, pro bono, no cost to Queenians County Public Schools. And so, kudos to Mr. Bell for making those arrangements to provide our teachers with some rich, rich professional development. And we have other supervisors who also provided rich professional development as well. Just a reminder that our art teachers' artwork will be showcased this coming Friday from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Queenians County Center for the Arts. So if you have a moment or an opportunity, please stop by to see our teachers' artwork, for sure. And here are our Queenians County Fair backpack winners. We had four winners, and you can see, Dr. Salins is pictured with one of our winners, and so they were happy to receive their backpacks, so that was great. And last but surely not, not least, Sodexo launches a Foodie Cafe. We're excited about the Foodie Cafe, because the Foodie Cafe offers a wide variety of healthy choices. So our students are able to select healthy choices for lunches, so we're excited about that. And that is our August Spotlight, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody signed up for public comment?
Well, I'll read it anyway. For citizen participation, "We ask all speakers to keep in mind the following guidelines. Speakers should sign the roster, including their telephone number and address. Comments should be limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. Questions or statements to the board should relate to a matter of general policy over which this board has authority. Comments about actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comment and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or board president. If you have a specific question, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to your question. The board respects your desire and right to convey your message freely, but as a courtesy to this board and our citizens to show respect for all. At this time, Mr. Smith, there is no one signed up."
Okay, do I have anybody in order that would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on. Okay, expenditure report, Ms. Towers.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, executive team. My name's Jane Towers, CFO. Tonight, we bring before you expenditure budget detailed and in summary for your review and any questions that you may have. One item of note, that this is the approved budget that was booked in March, there is going to be a budget amendment coming later on next month.
Significant?
I'm sorry.
And a significant amount?
Yes.
Because this, right now, is showing us 64% has already been allocated.
A lot of that is in salaries. Yes, salary-related.
So how is this spread out already, already through the year?
Exactly. They're already in coverage for the year, but there were some reclassifications of job duties that we'll go ahead and allocate and break down even further. An example would be your assistant principals at the four elementary schools. You'll see that under mid-level admin, so there'll be a budget amendment that gets placed in there as well.
Another thing, we've talked about it, we know in our budget, fuel costs are going to be an issue that we want to stay on a, at least a quarterly basis to find out where we're going to be, because things aren't trending in the right direction on that one. Any other questions by the board? Thank you. Hey, if anybody's had a, we're not going to do break. Everybody's had a chance. Everybody's tired yet, all right? Plus, I'm under pressure to get to, human resources. Everybody had a chance? We looked at our human resource report. Have a motion.
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to accept the human resources and substitute bus driver report as reported in closed session? Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Dr. Salins?
Yes, I actually thank you for approving that report. In doing so, you have approved two new positions here in the district that have been filled, and I'd like to, first of all, congratulate and invite up Mr. Joe Savory. Joe comes to us with many, many years of experience in law enforcement and will be our new coordinator of school safety and security. We're really happy to have him, we're happy to have his experience here, his presence, his students are in our building. His students are in our buildings. So, he has an extra-special vested interest. But just his overall experience level that he brings to the table, I don't know that we could find a more top-notch person. And I'm so excited for this opportunity. This is a position that is well-needed in the district. Will well be served as we increase our school resource officers, as we continue to work in partnership with our local authorities to improve the safety of every building for the benefit of our student and staff members. So, I'd like you to congratulate and welcome up for it.
Thank you.
That'll be our password.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. He's the Deputy Director of the Maryland Center for School Safety. Most of the regional reps, that includes Queen Anne's County, Antarctica, Kent, and Carolina County. Joe and I have been working a lot together. Just like Sid and I have. And it's top-notch here, isn't it?
I'm just trying to get one of his end-of-year money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joe, the Deputy Director for the Maryland Center for School Safety. Most of the regional reps includes Queen Anne's County, Antarctica, Kent, and Carolina County. Joe and I have been working a lot together. Just like Sid and I have. And it's top-notch here, isn't it?
I'm just trying to get one of his end-of-year money.
I just wanted to say that, you know, we are truly fortunate to have somebody of Joe's, you know, level. He was really crucial in us developing our emergency plans prior to COVID. Did a lot of training for us. And then, it's nice to have it come full circle and for you to come back to us. So, your office is ready, ready across your minds. So, great. Looking forward to it.
You can't get that far away.
And the second person that you approve this evening is Mrs. Angela Bieber. She is the new early learning facilitator. I'd like for her to come forward. Angela comes to us with many, many years of experience. We won't shut up just because we are just about the same age and have the same level of experience. But, no, Angela comes to us with specifically an expertise and accreditation for pre-K schools and the pre-K expansion. And so, she is going to be a welcome addition to that department in helping us to continue to not only expand our pre-K, but also to meet what we need to meet for the blueprint. And I just welcome her level of experience. She's a true team player. And we're just so happy to have you here. So, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Love the board.
Thank you.
Right. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, next will be 902. Mr. Evans.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, members of the board, executive team. For the record, my name's Matt Evans, Supervisor of Student Services. I have before you tonight a request for approval of the renewal of the Naviance license for our career development and exploration, career and college development and exploration. Also, this platform is used by the high school counselors when they're submitting all documents and applications to colleges. And it also provides us data through alumni tracker on graduates' post-secondary enrollment. This is the fifth year of the five-year contract. So, after this year, we would be able to renegotiate or look elsewhere.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Entertainer motion?
I have a motion, sir, to purchase an Aviance license at fiscal impact dollar amount of $43,954.61. Budget source, the FY '23 unrestricted budget under guidance software.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir. Go Tigers.
Mr. Tally?
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, and executive team. For the record, my name's Adam Tally. I am Supervisor of Career Technical Education and Social Studies. It's been a while since I've been up here. So, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm here tonight to ask approval for the purchase of a new vehicle alignment machine for our automotive program at Queen Anne's County High School. As you see in the proposal, this machine is over 15 years old. It was purchased in 2007. It is severely out of date. We are unable to update the machine with the software that we have. It's running on Windows XP, which has been out of date for many years. It has a CD to update, and we are just unable to update it. Without this piece of equipment, we are not able to certify our program with ASE, which is our accrediting body. And then, therefore, we would be unable to use it for certification for our students. So, it is a large cost. But again, it's over 15 years old, and it is a much-needed piece of equipment for our program.
And when our students go through this program, and they can go, I mean, then they can write to a facility, repair facility with a certificate to help get a job and certify.
From ASE, which is the national industry-recognized automotive credentialer. So, absolutely. And we, you know, I'm proud to say, as always, we pay for the certifications for all of our students. So, our students go in, we pay for these certifications for them, and then they are able, as soon as they come out, to go into any industry, automotive industry, or doesn't even have to be automotive, you know, to start in the career field.
So, this, Ms. Bent was very passionate about getting this done. And if she was here, she would tell you how grateful she is, as we all are, because CT is so important to the board, as all of our programs are. But she would definitely be thanking you for making this happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to purchase the new alignment machine for the automotive technology program at Queen Anne's County High School? Fiscal impact dollar amount of $34,114.85. Budget source is the FY '22 year-end funds.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next is cafeteria, Ms. Hickey and Ms. Pollan.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, and executive team. For the record, I'm Julie Hickey, Coordinator of Food Service.
And I'm Carla Pollan, Facilities Planner.
And we come before you tonight with one item for action. And that would be for the approval of a contract with Vigil Contracting for the renovation of the cafeteria serving lines at Bayside Elementary School, as well as the replacement of the condensers and evaporators in the walk-in refrigerator and freezer at Bayside Elementary School. That contract would include the demolition of the existing cafeteria lines and the purchase of all of the new equipment for the new cafeteria lines, meaning the melt coolers, hot and cold serving wells. They would be putting on new sneeze guards, some decorative lighting, LED lighting, just to give the lines a more attractive look. It would also replace the cold and hot pass-throughs on both of the serving lines, as well as a new cashier station. That contract would also include the removal of the existing condensers and evaporators in the walk-in refrigerator and freezer, and the purchase of new ones, the installation of those condensers and evaporators, as well as new refrigerator and freezer doors, properly sealed, to maintain temperatures.
Three questions. When will this take place?
Our hope would be, depending on the length of time, that we would do it over the break, the Christmas break.
Secondly, what is, I see here, it's food service fund balance? How much is in that balance? Will it cover this?
Yes.
It's allocated.
It will cover it. We're in the process of closing out our audit financial statements, but there is a fund balance carryover from last year in '22, or in '21 to '16.
And three, we couldn't get this done over the summer? So, we couldn't interfere with winter break? I mean, it just didn't come up. Okay. That's fine. That's all I got.
And if it's not able to be done over the Christmas break, what we will do is, you know, Bayside has two identical lines.
Yes.
We can go ahead and we will, you know, remove one line, keep one open, and replace them, you know, at different times so that we would not disrupt meal service.
I just, firm fixed? It's a firm fixed price?
Yes.
I know we have a lot of schools, and this is an ongoing issue. We, I know probably not where everybody wants to be, but this is where we need it to go right now.
This is one of the oldest kitchens. The equipment that's in there and the serving lines are 30 years old.
I mean, I mean, things, you know, because when we started MacKellon High School, and you said, tell me 25 years, and I can remember when we built it. You know what I mean? It's just, it just, time goes by pretty quickly.
Bayside was 1991. So, yes, it's definitely overdue.
Okay. Any further questions by the board?
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to approve the request for the funds to do the cafe serving line and remove, replace all the walk-in refrigerator condensing units with Guardian Sourcewell, Vigil Contracting, fiscal impact dollar amount of $212,542.17. Budget source is the food service fund balance.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
You're still here?
I'm going to stay with you for a few more. So, the first item I have for you this evening is to ask your approval for a contract with Flynn Mid-Atlantic to provide the partial roof replacement at Kent Island High School. So, this is approximately 85,000 square feet. It's a 22-year-old roof, low-slope modified. We are working with Flynn under a competitive bid process. So, in the packet, you will see that we did put this out to bid. There's a bid tabulation for you, as well as two requests to move some funding from both the state and county reserves to assure that we have enough to complete this project. The contract price is $1,069,495. We are adding a 5% contingency request to that just in case we come across unforeseen conditions. And this is coming out of prior capital budget request. So, it is budgeted for.
And clarification, you said, high school? But these are the reserves from the high school that we couldn't do, that we're not putting into two different projects, one of them being the elementary school.
Thank you for the clarification.
With the 5% contingency, because it would be over the 25,000, will it still come back if you need it, or will?
Yes. If there was anything over 25,000, we would bring it to your attention. The hope is that we won't have any unforeseen conditions, and we won't need to use it.
Any further questions?
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to approve the contract with Flynn Mid-Atlantic for the partial roof replacement of Kent Island Elementary School? Fiscal impact dollar amount of $1,122,970. Budget source, FY '22 and '23 budget, capital budget.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. The second item for you this evening is the contract. The second is the contract approval for the partial roof replacement at Bayside Elementary School. This was also a competitive bid process, and the low bidder was Rain Tree Services. This is replacement of the standing seam metal roof at Bayside Elementary. It's approximately 23,000 square feet. It is a 28-year-old roof. Again, we are asking a 5% contingency for unforeseen conditions. The contract price is $1,056,450. And this was also reserve funds from the capital budget. We will be utilizing some of the same Kent Island High School roofing funds that we had asked to be placed into reserve. You will see in your packet, again, there are letters that indicate we would like to have those funds transferred to both the state and county, and those are currently in process with those entities.
And the work will be done when?
We are leaving the schedule as flexible as possible to allow the contractor to work when they are able to do so. If we have the weather that will allow us to do it this fall, we will try and get some of the work done this fall. If we have a moderate winter, we may be able to do a little bit over the winter. The hope is that we get all the materials on site now to avoid any cost overruns. And then, if the work has to be done next spring or even into next summer, we can accommodate that.
This is over a non-instructional?
Yes.
So... A little easier to do a renovation and not disruptive to do the instructional process.
So, Bayside Elementary School is over the public areas. That would allow us a little bit more flexibility to work at times that school is in session. Kent Island Elementary School, a little bit trickier because it is over some of the classroom areas. So, we'll be working very closely with the administration at the building to make sure that we are accommodating all of their needs.
It's something we've done before. We've done it at Churchill and Selverwood Elementary School. We're successful with it.
And I've asked you this question before. The people that work on this project are vetted?
Yes.
That makes sure that they're properly centered on school property during school months?
CO-MAR requires for them to go through a check to make sure that they're valid.
Yep. They maintain background checks on their employees that are on school site.
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to approve the contract with Rain Tree Services for the partial roof replacement of Bayside Elementary School? Fiscal impact dollar amount of $1,109,273. Budget source, FY '22 and '23 capital budget.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. The third request this evening is your approval to purchase new student furniture at Queen Anne's County High School. So, utilizing a cooperative purchasing contract, the Mid-Atlantic Purchasing Team, we are hoping to replace chairs, desks, science tables, stools, and art tables. This is going to allow the teachers and the administration some flexibility to be able to reconfigure room layouts in the event that we require additional social distancing. This will give them greater flexibility than they have with their current seating. We hope that this will be the first of several phases to replace the furniture throughout the school. Please note, this is a 16-week lead time, as we have seen with all of our furniture requests. So, our hope is that we would get this here and possibly over the holiday break, be able to get the new furniture in place. If not, we will be looking with the administrative team to be able to phase that installation in when the product arrives. The cost implication, $396,147.32. This is coming from SRT2.
Just a quick question about the SRT2 money. It's, even if we don't get to it right away because it's earmarked, we don't, because SRT2 is up until when?
SRT2 is next September.
Okay.
Next September. And this is one of three phases for the school, so...
Yes. We would like to do total replacement.
About the same sliver. It's covered under SRT2 funds.
Social distancing.
For social distancing. Thank you.
Any other questions?
May I make a motion to approve the purchase of new student furniture[1655.55] May I make a motion to approve the purchase of new student furniture for Queen Anne's County High School with the Duron Company fiscal impact dollar amount of $396,147.32. Budget source, SRT funds.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And you see Principal Shreckinghoff is here and Billy Brice for, yeah.
I know it's not proper protocol, but thank you.
Anything for you, Mr. Shreck.
Most of that furniture was purchased in 1956, so...
Hey, Sid, I remember.
It's there in the 70s. Let's take it easy.
All right, sorry.
He's got his name on a couple of chairs.
Can I have one with my name on it?
That's very funny.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Kibler?
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members and executive team. Dr. Matt Kibler, Director of Accountability. I'm not here to ask for money.
Yay.
I am here to seek approval tonight for the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy, Policy 104. Again, this is just updating the policy that, that you all approved back in May or June, I believe, and we asked, we wanted to add staggered terms to the three members, so that's what we're doing tonight. There's been no comments.
Yeah, we discussed that, that we have a three panel, so they'll be pointed for three years.
Exactly.
On, now, it would be 1, 2, 3, and then...
Correct. And I, I did add an extra line as well in here, that if, if somebody would have to be removed during their term, that whoever the replacement would fill out that term, just to keep it, keep it staggered.
I think that's good, because I think against, two or three aren't going to go all at once, because you need some history on some of this stuff. Board, any further questions?
Well, thank you for not asking for any money, because we gave it to Ms. Pollan. Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to approve the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy Number 104?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any citizen comments? Does anybody in the audience have any comments or things? Okay, our next work session will be September the 21st of this year, and our next board meeting will be October the 5th. Any other board members have anything?
Thank you all.
Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Aye.